Welcome to our work meeting number one twenty twenty four. And we will start with an agenda review. Almost up to start, we'll administer the oath of immunity people right after the call to order. Review of our agenda. We're adding that as far as I need. We'll put it in about the minutes of the previous meeting. We're giving a proclamation for Chief Argo, who is retiring from Palmetto's. As the fire chief, actually, I'm the city administrator, which is a, I mean, a super good guy. He's been incredibly helpful to the city for a long time. And we're just issuing a proclamation to bring him and a friend to his retiring event. So that we're not doing anything with that. Uh, no more of our staff reports and first item on the agenda is a public hearing on rezoning our hamlet. Mike?
That's right. This is a major property expansion of the Saranve Hamlet. The property is two hundred and two point eight three acres. It faces a large frontage on Tardis Road, the east side of Tardis Road, right down in the community county line. So it's roughly square shaped with flowers. And it connects to the existing Saranve Hamlet at the former Simpson property, which was the last Saranve rezoning. This application does not come with a concept plan or site plan. And this would be just a straight zoning. And the only news that would be allowed of that property without a content plan would be as open space. The benefit to the outland is that they would have the reason for to develop rights from that property to make it fly elsewhere in the district. Uh, and then they would have to come to council within council plan for that property before doing any construction on, on that property. I have heard from them and received a request for. Yeah, so the delay, right? So request for a deferral, just wanted to confirm. On the east, the eastern property boundary shows some, there's a title conflict with the lots on the other side of Dave Watson. Watkins Road, the applicant is contacting all of them and to find a solution to that. The proposed solution, they just haven't completed that process. But the proposed solution that Saranve would quit claim would basically give those properties ownership of that narrow strip of land. I think it's twenty five feet of the white. It's not, it's not a.
Okay, just to be clear for people that aren't used to thinking about this, what it basically is, is that both owners show the warranty for that property. It's not clear in the title.
Yeah, so. Correct. The legal descriptions on those need overlap. And that's, yeah, that's not a. And so Saranve proposes to give them pre-titled. Right now, there's conflict. They would give them pre-titled to that narrow strip of land, but to allow the, um, uh, the buffer that the city requires to be measured from Saranve's original property line. So that's a process they have to go through with multiple property owners. They haven't completed that process yet. So they're requesting a deferral of the decision. We still have the, the public hearing this evening. It's been advertised. We still have a public hearing. But a deferral on the decision until after this will be.
And, and again, we don't have a, a, a plan for this, but the understanding we have is that this would be similar to the last one. Where there might be some, some, we've all seen that, that they'd be like, oh, that's not home, this is friends. And most of the development rights are going to be in the. Any questions? So that's that. The next one is twenty three dash oh four four, which is the rezoning of the village, the Merrill Village.
This is, we talked about this quite a little bit. I don't know how much detail you want to go. Again, this time around, but this is the proposed Merrill Park Village at the all four morgues of South Buckway and Cochranville Road. Five hundred and twenty five total acres. The plan is for two thousand residential units and quite a little bit of, of commercial. It's bounded to the north by Cochran Mill Park, to the south by the city of Palmetto, which is a project by the same developer on that property. To the east by Wilkerson Mill Gardens and the Bear Creek Mixed Juice Hamlet. And to the west by a property owned by Carl Blue Park. So all major, major landowners on, on, on all sides there. At this point, of course, the property in the south will, will be subdivided into various, various lots. The property to the east in Bear Creek is their open space. They of course had shown buffers at that point on their, um, on their concept plan. And most of their development was on the other side, eastern side of their property. So they didn't show much very close at all to, um, to the proposed village. We had presented, staff had presented some conditions early on. Those conditions have, uh, the recommended conditions have changed quite a bit. I don't want to run through those at this point. Right now, the recommendation though is for, again, deferral of this project. The applicant has recommended or has, has expressed his preference for entering the development agreement required by the TDR ordinance before the rezoning and he has not been presented by the city with the draft, although we have a draft. He's just not ready to go to it. But, um, uh, he had hoped to have that signed before the resort knows exactly what it's going to be, which is understandable. And, um, that hasn't happened yet. So the, the recommendation here is for, for another deferral of the, of the decision. This is not a public hearing. We've been through all the required public hearings, several in planning commission. You all had one in, in city council, um, last month. And so this would just be discussion and then a decision issues to make. If you choose to vote for approval, there's some language in the, um, in the memo that staff would recommend you include that covers the requirement for the development agreement to be signed. Again, assuming there's a referral, that, that won't be necessary. I'll, the, the planning commission asked for several amendments to the condition, which I'm happy to run through if you'd like. I just wanted to point out that one of those requests by the planning commission was not addressed in the condition that you see because staff didn't come up with a reasonable solution to that one. It is the condition that currently states that the owner and the city both understand that the city won't be able to permit any buildings over forty feet without a ladder truck. And, um, the applicant understands, of course, if they're the first mover, they need to provide the truck. Planning commission was hoping that we could put something in there where even if they are not the first mover, yes, the, the city fires a truck before they want to build over that height, that there would be some sort of contribution to that in the absence of an impact D ordinance. I know that's a difficult thing to do, so I would certainly defer to, you know, to Rick on, on any potential solution to that. But that was something the planning commission was hoping that could be incorporated, but he is not incorporating in the, in the condition.
Want to be able to talk about that? You know, there was still some, some, you know, some issues in the funding commission. The funding commission had that because of the timing and requirements in their own ordinance. And therefore, it gives us the opportunity to have some of the conversations coming in here and address those issues. And so not only because of the development agreement, but also some of those, I think it's the way, it's just the way I defer. Any questions about that? All right. Um, next is twenty four dash oh oh one, which is a further amendment around. It is to serve on commissions and.
It was, I think it burned it down. The half of the time were free to adopt this charter change ordinance. And as I was getting my paperwork together to file it, I realized we had not advertised it as the law requires. So we're just starting that process over. It's been advertised in our legal organ. This is a first read.
So again, first read, we won't be acting on it today. I'll go ahead and say what I, what I think anyway, because I was kind of against it before. I'm going to be able to answer, you know, the, they think they want to be the best guy on the particular dimension. It doesn't make sense to me. We had a couple of people, for example, on their store commission or parks commission at different times who were just outside of the city. You know, fiscal advisor or whatever. And that want to be engaged in the city council staff on the ones engaged. They don't ever have to be in that. That would be the option to do that as a mandatory plan. It just seems to me unnecessary kind of things to cancel. Just my opinion. Anybody else want to talk about it now or, you know, as we get closer to action on the next month or whatever you want to do?
Yeah, I mean, that was my original thought. That, that, that absolutely. But yeah, I mean, we had it in the past, so I think, but I, I don't know, maybe council member, maybe we, I chatted about it.
We got the, may I run?
I thought there was an issue where someone outside would be serving, the rules would change or allow.
We, we did that at one point because we had somebody that wanted to be on the parks commission. That lived just outside the city, that was very involved in the parks, the whole process and efforts and all that, Mary got wants them. And at that point, we changed the rules on the committees to allow that. Again, with the idea being that the city council could only be the ones making that decisions. If we had any view, it makes sense. Uh, since then. So I like for some historic commission. She has a partner, she has a job, and she's down here a lot. And she has a back nine store advertisement. But again, there's no requirement to ever make that happen unless the council wants to. I mean, both those guys, you know, you know, they, you know, they're maxed out. And there are a lot of people here and, uh, whoever that one is, especially, especially case, simply because what she's been doing twenty years. And I think Sarah Lewis, she wrote something to the table when her family is rude. And additionally, they don't move a pole with them. At least thirty five hundred people. That's just me. Keeping it up, you're right. But all of our commissions are on the advisor and they don't get the change of policy or anything. The city council is one person. Those, those are the two arguments, right? And that's what, again, just, you know. From my perspective, there's no benefit to restricting what the council can do to the council. All the reasons they want to do something is legal. But I, I gave your point too, you know, that a lot of people in the city and people want to help them. But sometimes there's a skill set. You don't have to do that.
That's the definition of resident.
I mean, there is a legal definition of resident, right? If the state was, you have to have a home. Yeah, or it's supposed to be a homestead where your voting registration is and that sort of thing. Well, that's the last one. That's, I mean, what, where each male, where you consider home, we all have. And I mean, you know, these folks have been very open about what their circumstances are. Sarah was living here, then she moved up to a, a prime year of, she still is here a lot. What, what are the reasons he's around? You know, special, like, uh, special advisor, you know. They're allowed to do that, so that, that is something. And Sarah's a perfect example. Sarah is still going to come to meetings and be there to answer questions. It's just, you know, there, there is some benefit when you're, I don't know, you're an expert in the subject. And you're willing to talk to the N R about it, or anything, say that I'm on the commission as opposed to I'm just talking about. Right? And then that's, that's all comes. I think, I think to your point, right, like people that want to help are, is, it's just a question. Do they get a vote on the thing?
Our new thing they gave me.
Thank you.
Uh, anyway, we're not acting on it today. So there's plenty.
We do have a seven minute pitch, a different pitch.
The next one, anybody else have any thoughts on that? Next one is twenty three dash oh four dash oh three. Oh, oh, two, sorry. And then name of that's also.
There you go.
There you go.
I received a call from the accounting office over at Saranve Farmhouse. They're trying to get a refund because they uncovered that their account software is an error, that they had overpaid their alcohol expice pack. So the amount is two thousand and sixty five feet. And it seems pretty something. But we all know how many years they're.
It's just this kind of thing would be something that has to be authorized by council. Anybody have any questions about that? All right. Uh, thanks. Uh, next one is twenty four three, which is a resolution for need to sign off on an agreement with, or by supporting services. They give grants every year around that.
My, uh, this is a long, usually, to apply for a three thousand dollar grant from the, from the county. It was a fifty fifty match. December, this is part of our, my question on, how about hints? Uh, with Charlie, uh, in the, in the, and, uh, I've both still got, uh, so quick to hand out for the, for the solid. It's the, how many of our, a fun, who've actually gone on the, what are you saying? It's expensive, it's maybe, um, in preparation for the acquisition, that things that we do all. Thank you. Uh, the acquisition due on January eighteen, which is about ten days away. And, uh, I'm getting warrants in a resolution support from the city council.
It's in city in a hard time hearing.
What, what, we could be here now.
I'm hoping so.
Like you're going down.
What, what brand? Combination of instructed performance and visual arts program that we only get the Cedar Grove, uh, uh, community center. We will actually have outside experts come in to instruct participants in program with other, uh, challenging residents and also extend to others in the county businesses and the county area. And, uh, the detail will be, are, are still being hammered out. To have a member, our, our, our deans and their, this were the programming and for the acquisition itself. So this is, this is kind of getting us a lead into the ability to actually apply with this part capacity.
Probably from a budgeting perspective, does this go into like the community outreach part of the council budget or where would this, where would this end?
We would, uh, from a match standpoint, we used to get L MIG match from, uh, capital E budget in that. So we can take it from our capital expenses because I don't want to take it out of mayor council budget.
Um, I want to say something about, um, for their last three years, we have received in over eight hundred thousand dollars in donations, which we will still continue to reach out, um, for those donations as well. So that's our part. When we look at the Cedar Grove community, we already have heart there. There are two groups there already is doing music there every Tuesday night and everyone's on. If we could do something for the community and have a space for the community, this is what we're looking for. Great. Thank you.
Do you have any questions for? Thank you. Next one is a resolution on the plumbing codes. Do you see a requirement, right? Is it okay?
Yes, sir. Um, so the city has a deal within the main hall of North Water Planting District. And, um, every few years, every city district gets audited. We're asked to put forward certain ordinances and plans to kind of help with water efficiency, like for us, on water, all that stuff. This one, we're required by Georgia D P D, um, to, it's our water efficiency for plumbing fixtures. And it's something that we are required to be by the saves. And to make a long story short, uh, we have to potentially announce this tonight and then submit it to B C A. They have sixty days to review it. Once they do their review, uh, we come back and formally adopt the plumbing code. This one will go, uh, in chapter eight under buildings and building regulations. It'll be under article four, that's laying provision. It'll create a new section, uh, which will be section forty four, uh, called local limit to plumbing codes for water efficiency. So again, it's not really an habit to do that.
And this, this language came from B C A?
It's from, it's, it's from.
Questions about that? It's mandatory, so we have to do that. Something is about when this comes into play, is this for new builds, renovations, sales? Required these materials and I, I, I don't know pressures and so on. Which is struggling to ask the question. Is it well water or? Anyone?
It, it mainly specifies fixtures, right? Like low blow fixtures and.
Yeah, modification is, the fixtures, um, I'm assuming it would, if you made like a renovation, you have to probably have to put that, that in. But I would definitely buy the rebuilds and, um, it's just the water vision. You can make sure we're not being very, very.
If the modification is going there, our only enforcement opportunities are unburned by them. Of course, anywhere in a metropolitan region, it's supposed to follow that, even if you're doing the wrong work. The, um, building official pointed out that, uh, washer and dryer are not, um, required to be, like, the A R C O. So anything related to washer and dryer which you find in here, they don't necessarily have an opportunity to affect. But there are things in here that are difficult from enforcement, enforcement perspective. But anything they did review as part of the permitting profit would be reviewed.
My understanding too is this is a part of the interstate water resolution thing. Metro district.
Yeah, the metro, yeah, a lot of the metro districts have been, yeah, certainly supportive of that. Yeah, for me.
I mean, that, that is true. The only, it would be for any, uh, with those people that are. And it's, it's mainly focused on business. So those are all bases which are supposed to be many of them. Um, and the only enforcement opportunity you have to come to them. It's, it's not like you're not going to rent a house. Well, I mean, that's a big up theater.
We're not going to come near housing tree. I don't know.
It's hard to find things that are in this area because those from people from those folks are basically following the same rules. Pressure release that.
This is something, right? It's something built up already. Just depends on the contract, right?
Anyway, I, you know, we, we get some of these, these, we just come above that. We don't have much enforcement still getting to the. Uh, and then the last one is twenty four dash oh five on the agenda. And that's the historic mission and planning mission meeting schedules. That's, this is all set their own meeting schedules and we just have to prove. Not much really to talk about there. Uh, and that is it for agenda review. Unless anybody has anything else. And then we have a couple of other items to talk about. Uh, one is planning support services and I think that's.
Evening, Mayor Council. Happy New Year. We're here, twenty twenty four. Let me turn my page here. You have any packets, some information on this agenda item plus up? In fact, that individual is on Zoom listening in. But, uh, this is a planning service and, and as I talked about last year and over the last several months, I always talk about how, and it's true, we need more police, we need more fire, we need more public works. Those, those people that have moves on the ground, we need those folks. The reason we have those folks in place, the reason we can afford those individuals out there doing those public safety services and public work services. We do that. We have tax dollars, residential tax dollars. We don't have a lot of commercial. Well, the residential tax dollars are generated by these folks right here. Basically three, we have Katie, we have mine, we have Sandy. And so I embarked on trying to get additional planning services. And we recently got Chris on board, he's economic development director. Of course, he has a planning background too, so he helps with those services. Um, but the good thing about going out and attending meetings and networking with different groups and stuff you run into folks. And I always ask, hey, do you know, and we're looking for one, trying to hire, we can find one. We don't want one necessarily right out of school with a one, but we want someone who has some experience that buys into our way of thinking. We have a special way of finding someone here. Check this. I should have saw it right in soon. Um, W N A engineering group, South Oak Parkway lines meeting. And they say, hey, I'm getting ready to bring a gentleman on board who was the community development director for the city of Roswell. Don't worry about it. City Roswell suffered, but it's just thinking about that level of experience and certified planner. And he's going to come and work in this engineering firm. It's, 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 um, great. So long story short, I had to talk to him and he can be simply like what we have now. We have safe build, we outsource, we have engineering, we outsource, and we would be able to outsource planning up to thirty two hours a month. Now, not over thirty two, probably less than thirty two, but it'd be dictated by my, to his department, payman's appeal. We're doing some of these plans, paper, reviewing, viewing zoning, reviewing the comp lane. And, uh, Jason Gates, is his name, his resume is in here. And he comes highly experienced, highly recommended in, just wouldn't bring to our council. If you, instead of bringing a planner in full time, which we know with the office space, be helpful to have one here full time. But this is the next best thing. And we would get a consultant here on call, but we need him just like we do with our engineering. And we call and say, hey, we, we got some stuff working. You can meet four hours on Thursday. Six hours on Friday or two hours on Tuesday for viewpoints, whatever. And that's what we're looking at doing. And of course, you don't have to worry about all the benefits, insurance and all those things come full down the way. So it's even better than ever. So we'll bring you to council and see if you would be interested in, in going that route. And, um, it's, you, there's, Rick Wednesday would be interested in small grants, loves that stuff, terms and conditions. You know, there is a, the agreement can be terminated by the party upon seven days prior to written notice. The seven day prior to notice. So it's not something that you're locked into forever. But I think it'd be something that would help out for community development department. That's what I'm always trying to do. Because we, we know what they, they're dealing with day in, day out. All the meetings, you're looking at this book right here. This, this meeting, this meeting is not about, you know, police and fire and admin and finance. It's, it's a community development meeting a lot of times, right? That's what's before you guys, big, big, big decisions about development. And that's what we're looking to help supplement this department. Kind of my mind, but one can give you that information. It is online right now, but I probably have a meeting. Opening is getting questions, we'll be questions or.
You know, we were talking about this earlier. There are some issues sometimes that we have a hard time addressing appropriately. Small water review and things like that. The idea of having on-call experts that can come in for a few hours to address a particular issue. Makes a lot of sense to me. Flex, flex capacity, that makes sense. And flex, flex capacity, that makes sense. You know, we're really busy sometimes, we're busy other teams, so the other families, employees that are always there.
Yes.
Sense, that's just my perspective.
I think we can, you can have someone to call on that's not, you're not inserting, if we, when we're, we're having need, we can, we have it already marked out, without possibly. Um, hundred sixty dollars more.
And man, it's forty people in the city of Ross. So great leadership skills isn't as well, but he's not going to even do that, he's going to be there to provide services as directed by Mike and as needed by Mike.
So uh, yeah, he um, he's got a great background, great uh credentials, I have um every faith that he would be able to do a good job. Be a nice pressure release valve kind of, right, where we can, you know, when it, when it gets to be a lot of traffic, a lot of work. Um, be able to give them some uh, uh, stuff to do to kind of relieve some of that pressure. And um, there are still certain aspects, there's still sort of certain processes that I'd love to um, to run through with, with somebody like this. Um, some of our um, uh, development application materials and guidance, um, that we could, we could use and know with.
Because experience is relevant in some of the situation here, just like Cobb. Right, Cobb in Roswell.
Right, right, there's, so there are certain kinds of things, right, and, and there's some stuff in the um, in the proposal, um, where I think that uh, I would probably make less use of them where um, uh, our um. Familiarity with our specific approaches is more important, um, but there are certainly aspects of it that are um, are generalizable. Um, and it's a matter of um standard practice, um, that, that I think that they can be, they can be.
That's the thing, right, like a, a stack of really easy standard things, get off your desk so you can focus on the ones that are mission-specific with, with public school. Any else, right?
No, another word in my hearing, that's right.
All right, thank you, thanks very much. Uh, next up, uh, this is a conversation that's come up a couple of times before, um. You know, right now, our mayor's fourth term gets elected every year cycle. Now, if you can, we'll try to roughly make sense of that, because everybody was elected in the city.
Good looking beer.
Council, that's no longer the case, and they moved to use half of the elections every two years, we now have a nursing council, basically, we have the two leaders. And the thought has always been, is it make more sense if the mayor or actually the deputy by the council? Uh, would be elected by each, I mean, council, now, you know, nobody changes that in council. But you, whatever, you keep the same person, thought about that, it's about having each council have the opportunity to make that decision themselves. And the only way we can change the majority, if I want to do this process, is if I were to change, it has to be through the legislature, and it's, it's not a simple thing. And so this was already an opportunity to start that process, if the council wants to do that. If so, in the time that's over, that wants to wait for a session, and bring it in, you know, in that way as an action here. Generally speaking, the uh, the, we have an in-home rule at the legislature, so the local legislators in period. And generally speaking, if they're all for it, then they're going to say, you vote for it, it's, it's kind of performed. But they like to see a unanimous vote on something like this in the municipal council. They don't want to be enforcing from the legislature, and there's on the city council, that, you know, people on the council don't agree with it. So again, I don't have a dog in that, I, um, the idea that each council gets to make that decision for themselves doesn't make sense to me. So again, whatever you all think about that, what I would want, before we try and take this for the legislative president. I think it's not what it is, I mean. Right now, it is, it is, we, we staggered the elections, we did not pull so many, it's a different third career, so.
So the whole first council got on that, and so we had to do that, so.
So it kind of made sense for them to be or something. And you know, the person, they can always roll over, right?
I'm going to have a lot of years. Good idea. I think three years too. We had talked about that as well, some of that rotating, the potential of it.
All right, just, again, you could get a lot, yeah, that's just, yeah, each council gets the opportunity to make that decision. Uh, so I'm hearing, depending on not so much, and.
Not with the grid and mass and.
Yeah, yeah, that would be high, I get it, I get it. How, how awesome, so cities where it's our changes over every year.
Yeah.
That's true too, that's.
Cedar Town.
Well. A player. Brett's involved exactly here, right?
It's your turn.
I don't know, sorry. Pointed or, or, or let's, uh, the very first meeting.
You sent me to an effect, right?
Two, so, but where it's gone, we have to get a change in the way to do it through the legislature.
Again, it's not that big a deal, it's, there's a very specific process, and we don't always say this, though. You have a, something, want to think about it, I mean, two, one year, that's something pretty much, but two years, for example. So I will tell you this, I want to say, I'm going to get into the council political game. Yeah, now, where it's two years, the same way, this person's going to sit there, we need for this person to um be in, in position to run the meetings, and have the mayor, the mayor, the mayor. Things a little more serious, when it's down to the time then when it's one year and. It, it turns into, I mean, like, that's just similar, it works in other cities, sometimes it will process, and we're seeing here, it is. Or hey, I mean, I, I haven't missed many meetings. Now, it's the county meetings, though, mayor, I mean, it's all, so, you know, we're all invited out for tomorrow, so like.
Oh, right, I'm not. By the fact, if somebody needed to add, on behalf of the city as the mayor, and the mayor was failed, or any, any signing.
Oh, right, exactly, I'm on vacation or something, something's been signed, you know, it's, 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 it's important to have that back. All right, so let's finish around that two, two years, and that'll be was before you guys, I mean, it would worry me, which gives us time to get it out today.
Yeah, yeah.
Sounds good, all right, thanks. Uh, we have the need to reappoint the numbers, I didn't mention the wizard bureau, um, they're done by district. So district three and five, you know, we're going to be reappointed, for all of them.
Um, I think just three, about round.
Right. Yeah, yeah.
Oh, because, because the council people that appoint.
Right, right.
The way that the ordinance is written, that, that's right. So the, the council people appoint, and the, the way the ordinance is written, you know, that, in the council people. So the, the appointments made by the last people don't necessarily stay. And uh, in district two, it's put for, and just wait, I don't know. Uh, three is Kara, right? And who was it by?
Carter.
Carter, then, then Kara, who does it?
Yeah, right. Um, you know, the, the general context has always been that there are people either involved in the industry, right, like in tourism here. Or have some other connections with it. Um, Carter obviously has the, the Jerry Hall, who presents on there. And Kara, I'm not sure what she does for a living, but I know she's been very active in the meeting, she's one of the.
She does a lot of marketing and stuff, stuff.
Right, they.
That's right, and they have both been very.
Amazing.
Uh, amazing in the work.
Yeah, yeah. Kara, I know.
Oh, Kara, you know, you have committees, and several people bottom turn, and one put the wire on, most of you. So that, that could be that person.
Yeah.
So Steve, and, and again, my recommendation would be just to reappoint those, because they've, they've only been in there for a few months, and they've already done a lot of work. Uh, but that's, that's something that you guys need to, they can burn. Um, I want to leave. Those appointments are. At the, at the discretion of the council person who appoints, so they go along with the term of the council person who appoints.
There are others that are at Mars that are annual, so.
Which will happen in our normal cycle.
Right.
Uh, which, by the way, is coming up, or we usually do that in, in March, uh, sometimes it's been later in April, but uh. I know that we've got at least one, maybe two openings on the historic commission, uh, we obviously have two on the planning zoning commission, this is me too, and few. Um, and Parks, do we have any? That's awesome, good. So, I'll say, you know, I'll take it, I mean, just to be clear on that, and uh, I know, you know, several names have been put forward, there's several of these, and, and we can talk about that. Probably the next uh planning commission meeting, um, one thing that we've done before, and I'm happy to do this again, is just put something like in the newsletter and online. Say, you know, if you're interested in this and have some skill set, it's aligned, and want to volunteer, let us know. So that at least we're looking at the full, you know, body of people that might be available for that. And I know, you know, different people have already recommended to the team, so it's, it's, we've already, uh, listened, coming together, some people have been put up for the, for their so easily. They're not keeping all of them. You also have anything to need to talk about? Yeah. Oh, yes, right. No, okay, you want to talk about that? You've gotten more recent communication directly than I, so.
Um, from lawyer representing the Hennessy family. Um.
Back up then.
So last year, we rezoned sixteen hundred acre, the home by the Hennessy family, uh, around the uh, Chantagutu River, um, as a mid-two hamlet for the um, Rosebud Movie Studio. Uh, one of the conditions in that, uh, in that rezoning condition fifteen, um, indicated that if they did close on the property, um, by the end of the calendar year. Um, the special use permits would expire, and then the um, council uh could have, and review the, the zoning and consider reverting as to RL or some other suitable zoning, you know, the, that's, that's. Um, I heard from the, the family's attorney, the property had not closed, um, and they're interested in us looking into backing out, backing out the zoning. Um, and so part of the question is, um, whether, of course, we could ask them to apply, um, for rezoning. Um, we have to go through all the process anyway, right, all the advertising and the public hearing, um, because the condition, condition number fifteen said, the city council could review and, and, and. Choose to revert, the question is whether you all want to just go ahead and do that, um, we can certainly get a letter from the property owner supporting that. Everyone's on record, uh, but really, I think that's the, the only salient question, I think, is whether or not you would like to do that of your own initiative. Um, or you want the property owner to um make an application. For, just like any, anybody would, would even.
I mean, I would, I would want something from them in writing, requesting that, but yeah, I think it's fine for us to do it then, based on that understanding.
We're gonna, so she can't hear. But I tested.
Because they won't ring that.
Yeah, I don't know if it's partly that.
So if that's the approach, I don't think, that, to that need of, of vote for them to initiate the process, or only could we launch it over three next month, we can sort of, that can be our policy. Um, since that was part of the conditions under the rezoning, um, what would the key be for this, might it's the owner one of the company that can do this? What would the filing, it's five hundred dollars, right, but if the council does it, there's no.
Right.
And there's no, really no review on part of the city staff, because we're just going back to RL. So there's no time to be involved in it, and to be my recommendation, that it be initiated by the council, but we do need something right, and we don't want to mistake as that whole statement, then we can screw that. Four, five months.
Right, right. There are some minor facilities advertising and mailing letters.
So how much is?
Yeah, it's, it's not a good number.
Does somebody have a sharp? I've watched. Any, anybody have any other thoughts on that? Again, I would want something right, and that's the name, but just as, as absolutely certainty, what the intention is, but, you know, I don't.
We never heard back, applicant extension, nothing, no.
We, well, I mean, we.
A lot of work.
We've heard several times.
His attorney contacted.
Yeah, we heard several times that it had been extended, and then the attorney let us know that it was.
Being, being, there's, there's nobody can hear.
Oh, yeah, that's what we, yeah, I'm sorry. Sorry, thank you. Yeah, right, that's, that's, in some ways, I'll be right, I think. All right, so again, anybody have any other issues on that? I'll, I'll tell you. Actually, I think that this, given what happened is. Around the, the, the U D studio, the entire, I'll just stipulate the entire conversation of all that, from this division itself. I think it speaks to. Not about this happens in Mike's office or the planning commission, but, um, but I think. It speaks to a need to establish a set of standards that don't let us get into that before there's some kind of evidence of a, that somebody can actually. And I don't, again, I don't know this specifically, it seems like. It's one of the issues, you know, you know, I've talked, and, and there's been conversation too, that I've been not aware of, like in planning commission. Uh, this, this uh, planning zoning workshop that we talked about scheduling, is one of the things I want to address there, is a process and concern about these big projects and. And, and how they live and, and the impact, like the document. But to your point, a lot of time and money is spent, is not coming back, and how pain is it, I get a much mind.
And I'm, I mean, I agree with you, I think that, you know, you go to the car lot to check your credits, but it's not a house, they don't check the credit anymore. I don't know what we're going to burn this people, they're checking their bank accounts, you got fifty million dollars, you can't get started. And, and to Scott's point, you created a vision in this town unnecessarily for an individual who had no money. Bottom line, he couldn't do it if he wanted.
Well, he didn't even establish, you know, any.
Well, at least you were going to say, I was paying for structure, I was paying for stuff.
I think, you know, we, there was a, some sort of hand waving about infrastructure, but not, you know, there was no. Negotiations to get that infrastructure in place, or anything, that's. And evaporated, new model. I'm wasting. Is that something we should, I mean, it is a question, but is that something we're allowed to do? If, to say, hey, Mr. Bill, you're, you're coming to me with a hundred million dollar project, I mean, say something in reserve by, if, if, if. I'm trying to think, you know, what, what the city would require, it's ours, like some type of letter from the bank, yeah, and we might extend credit on this, of course, that's not guaranteed. But what happened, I don't believe that here, I can imagine that part of it had to be the rapid increase in the Federal Reserve rate. Interest rate, um, that could impact, I think, a lot of other things, but you're right, I mean, a lot of time was spent on it. Uh, a lot of motions got involved, um, and now all of the odd. One, one thing I, I think is, I mean, I'm happy to talk about anything, but I think, you know, one of these things is. Aired for that conversation, even more prepared for that conversation, uh, to talk about what's legal, right, and also what makes sense. And to your point, financing was the problem, even, and a lot of times you can't get your finance until you've got your zone. So thinking about how that works, and also how our expenses get covered, because there are, there are a lot of expenses that have been something like this. And also the process for clarifying issues on utilities and things like that, I mean, I, I.
Are you negotiating these events to get these?
Property. All, all of that, right, I mean, and, and I think there's more there than, than you are aware of, but I mean, the point is making that clear, and how that. Information gets out, and what our process is, and I'm one of the twelve people. Information gets out and what that process is, and I'm rather totally interested for everyone.
It's not, is the city supposed to like be the gatekeeper of where you're going to get your utilities? And I kind of understand, like, if you want to borrow money, you can't borrow unless it's been rezoned. Because of product reason, but would the city go and look at where you're going to run, did you switch for the water, or is that?
No, um, but what the city can require is that they show proof that utilities are available and accessible to the property. Um, I am. If you pique my interest on, on, can we require some type of. Good patient commitment on, well, it's not just whether Key would have the money, but could he raise the money, you know, and where would it come from, those are the type of things, so. Let, let me get some thought to it, you know, I want to do some talking with some folks.
Oh, really?
It is, so you would have to consider, will it make sure that as a this size, now the application fee goes a long way in covering our costs.
We, we also need to talk about, and and again, I think this this planning zoning workshop, we're talking about this, because. You know, we had talked to Fulton County, Douglas County, for example, about sewer, we had talked to a land and water, so I mean, Douglas County about water. We need. And the fact that we don't know the.
He's that.
Is a problem.
It's a problem.
I mean, that's, that's just a problem, and so we need to talk about processes and making sure that that information.
It should be part of this.
Yeah, right now.
Football of the waters.
That's what I told him.
Yes, well, Wednesday, those letters. Exactly. The. Landowner, yeah, with this responsibility, get it, the table.
Well, then, you gotta make sure it's pale. Nobody, nobody asked for it, and we need to.
We want to.
With that, what I'm saying is, we want that, but they're not going to use that this. Okay, what you're doing, but maybe, but obviously, obviously, you, I'll do it all. Planning is on me. We can talk about it in the.
Yeah, no, we're talking about this.
We're, we're improving things that. And then, yes. Right, and so one of the things that speaks to is the need, which is think about what are the implications of this in time, because it's. One of them, there's a kind of.
Sense hanging around, but passing time, it's like.
I mean.
Even when it's blast.
Hardly the hand. You need to deserve. I think it's important to.
I care.
You know, for. We get, and we have conversations, we're having, for the. Because they.
Where's the work at?
Right.
Hundred percent.
But what is the water? With the water.
This is the first one. Won't show you this one.
Yeah, they, they do different fires, they got their own.
Yeah, just hold on to them.
Some.
Right, maybe.
And so. Again, that's something.
West.
Workshop, we should get.
Yeah, it's.
Be like it is.
Well, I just. The applicants provide, but. For sure, it's whatever.
Something, and make it weak.
Whether it's water, whether it's sewer, whether it's like risk, saying what it is and what the timeline is, you know, is it available to the property? Of course, it's up to, probably only paid for, usually, to bring the infrastructure off, but, you know, is it available, is it available, we need to make sure that it is. You know, this may be the source.
I think too, that there's.
As Kelly said, it was a bit of a, that would be.
Again, the way that these.
Bobby, you have this conversation.
Not that people come and do, dollars means it's project, they come in and get their zone, they've got money to get the zone, they can do the the funding. Right, then happens, once they have their zone. That's what they have. Some shit. Well, now, the shares, the whole thing works, and they should probably.
Sure.
Right, like, there's not the possibility of the strike coming together, and to your point, that may still have not happened.
That one.
A lot of projects have been put on board in the last year because of that, but but at least we have some notion before we turn everything upside down. That it's further along, because you don't, we don't have any, they're just, I thought the last. But we definitely.
I'm going to be people.
I mean.
Oh, no.
Well, I pretty much work in.
I got it.
You're online, please mute.
I got it.
It's the citizen. It was an activity.
I guess.
So long, and I get it, it is the sense that we all pray more for the person who does not live, the person that lives. And that's what the the a lot of the theater in Scott, because back to what Tom said, they can't give you the minutes without the zone, you know, mention that. Why are we changing the song into a column?
Me.
Now, everybody in this way, no, no.
Yeah, you did so that she's playing. Pressing.
I don't know where outside people, they don't vote, but it's.
As you say.
Glass, no, it's all attention.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Uh. Well, he is not. You know, I, we need to, I think this is a huge, that's a lot. This whole. He created, I mean, he was, all of us, six, seven weeks, only about ten, it's been, again, citizens, man, here we did all this, but. He ain't got a dollar, only ran with a bunch of. And I do think that's our fault, I do think we need to put some assurances in place, so that, you know, if I know if I found that at one, you have no ability to do nothing. None of this happens. None of this happens, you know, I don't go shopping about anything else. I don't know. But I'm just saying, it's um, it's just unnecessary to create that type of film in this community. Um, we need to, I mean, we did back to our ground checks and there's another hire. You know, we figure out, are you closing down banks, and your developments getting finished? What have you done, you know, this is like random, trying to have some like communities, we had two of us, we just weren't working on that. Um, but he tells too many of us, you know, that was the economy. You know, deal with it, we all did. You know, we cut back, just developed it, whatever you got to do, not my issue, I run that company, run yours, but we should not put that in one stress on the citizens of New York. There has to be some. That's just my thing. To decide if it's worth even having a conversation, that one seems, definitely, we don't have a conversation, but, you know, if you ain't got no money, why would you talk?
You know, there's a balance, so you got to balance these rights. The sale of property to Kaya Studios, and we don't like the aims, but it's hard, it's 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 a challenge to come up with a way to solve that, because there's going to be some. If I some of the people that we're paying.
I don't know, so Hennessy can't sell his property. I'm not saying anybody, so.
So.
I'm saying, before you develop a tariff that much brand. And um, put this city in trouble. We need some insurance that you can do what you say you can do, and right now, what we continue to find out is these permits that we passed out, I'm not seeing any of them. Steve's doing, I see some scam houses, and I've been here thirteen, fourteen years, I'd be interested to see the list of permits. People were doing it. I think that would be more fascinating.
It's all rare, and it was like, really, really.
Yeah, and I, I wouldn't say, I mean, I said, we need some assurance, but we don't have to answer unnecessary phone calls from citizens. And 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 look, Ken Studios, what we get out of that, reran range, buy a Facebook, they're very pissed off, that's what we got.
Everybody was pissed off, I mean.
No, right.
Let's be honest. I also think there are some people that are upset, we might be missing out on what could have been a potential really big tax spend to the city, there's a way to look at that, too.
We just got. But yeah, but it was, if everybody's. Sure. Use insurance. And so. I mean, you know, neither one of them. There's also. In what? Of sure, I mean. Buy, buy a property. But that's a risk, like, I mean, that is, initially, everyone in business knows that you have that risk, and, and I think we all agree. Right, that we need some better policy around this, right, so I think, you know, we're trying to litigate every detail, but right now, it doesn't make sense to me. What makes sense is recognizing that we have an issue, right, and getting people ready to have a proper conversation around that issue, make make policy changes to. Really, help make it better, there will always be. The opportunity for somebody not being able to do what they were hoping to do, because they couldn't get money, you cannot restrict things enough, that isn't a possibility, particularly in development. And this city, if we, you know, we talked about this a lot, you know, there's a absolute need for some development to make the preservation of the women and that to happen, and. We can certainly set something up that doesn't require as much upset for things that aren't likely to happen, which is important. This one probably was from the beginning. Um, can we agree to make it, there there will be an agenda about this? Oh, for sure, no, this is, so there, the 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 main things, right, that we talked about, uh, for this this zoning workshop. Are, number one, for people that don't have that much background in zoning, to primer on what it actually is and why it is the way it is and how it works. A culling of questions, right, because there are some things that are kind of public interest things that probably have the weight for it in its coffin that day, but there are some things that we can probably correct without. Don't meet against our current, you 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 can't do policy that explicitly. And chief among those, right, this issue of what's the minimum lot size, and how do we govern them, and something that keeps cutting up, that we obviously haven't addressed, under the satisfaction. Two, is this this kind of policy issue around applications, particularly major applications, and what's required of the, you know, time and process and all of that. You know, the fact that the planning zoning commission still had questions, we had to vote, because our zoning said they had to vote, is an issue, right, and so, those things that we can address right now, because that doesn't conflict with anything. Um, and and getting to the bottom of which ones are are one and which are the other, is, I think, the other part of this process, we will probably come out of that with a work list, more than this. Top line, they, which is in here and now, a few years. So, that's the goal, for sure. Speaking of which, scheduling has gotten much more difficult, because we have people on the council now that have jobs again, like, like regular jobs, they're. At place. And 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 so, I'm wondering, uh, you know, we have two things we're scheduling, I want to get it scheduled as quickly as we can, the one is our retreat, which is something that we always do, and particularly now, we've got a council with a couple of people on it, it feels very important to me. To get you guys up to speed on what are our. Different departments and cities are doing.
Thanks, everyone's now.
Farmers are lodging, all the things that we talked about in that retreat, and then the other one is this planning and zoning workshop. Um, both of them, like to get it done before the end of February, and I'm just wondering from scheduling, like, at the time of text, and, you know, like, people think they're open, they're not really open, whatever. The doodle polls for free, yes. Yeah, that's what's great. Where you're not, I'm sorry, doodle, like a doodle call, where, you know, just put out a bunch of dates. Um, because that might be.
Bring it, do it all the time.
Thirty days between here and there.
It's like a trauma thing.
Is that all right, Ian, right? Yeah, okay.
Always good, you know, a couple of weeks in advance, I can.
Yeah, no, right, yeah.
Same thing, right, like, for me, too, right, oh.
But but I know for some people, it's hard, you know, you just got a brand new job, right, and probably, we'll take that. And and so, I would send every bit of people for tonight, with all the available dates, hopefully, we can get a couple of days, I'm trying, just I can, to, you know, advise for the end of the week, just because it's easier for a lot of people, but not necessarily have to do that. We could also do Friday and Saturday, or Saturday, or Monday, but, you know, whatever, whatever works, you know, I'll say. Well, yeah.
For now.
Two separate things, each two days. So, again, my goal would be on the doodle poll for you to tell me every day of all of these days, if you're available, and hopefully, six people line up on four days, and we do this every day. And uh, I appreciate very much staff who, you know, will be suffering the consequences, whatever those days are, hopefully, that's, that's just where we are.
So, Tom, the Georgia Municipal Association, which is um, the United, the end of January, I'm going to be attending class, and one of the classes is going to be planning and.
Yeah.
That I'll be in.
No, and I get, look, I mean, like, everybody has things that are really important for doing. Um. Yeah, so I, but let's, let's try and find those ways in your son. Like, fix them to be great, I mean, which is, praise the ground. Um, anything else, try to start getting off, uh, we'll still have, on the bean until the meeting starts.
Over there, it's like, don't you have a?
You bet it, that's, hey, it's our before it started.